Good evening and welcome to our first Zoom hybrid meeting of the Eastline Board of Selectmen for November 16, 2022. All those who can, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. I do not believe we have any additional agenda and consent calendar items. Are there any delegations? Any delegations? Seeing none, approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of November 2, 2022.
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 2, 2022, as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ann Schicello. Any comments? All those in favor, sitting in favor, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? It carries unanimously. Moving on, consent calendar. Do we have a consent calendar? No consent calendar. That's even better. So anyway, okay, moving on. Several months ago, we had SCORE group make a presentation to us, and Nikki came and spoke to us a couple, a few meetings ago, and asked them to come back on to make a presentation. So they're here and after the complete, there's no action schedule, but after the completion of this, we'll invite some of the members of the group that are zooming in with the hybrid to join us and for a discussion. So turning it over to Nikki now, if you're ready to make your presentation. We'll see how this goes. So this is our first foray, so good luck.
So thank you for having us.
You have to make sure your microphone is on and talk into that.
I sure do. Okay.
There's so much, so much technology going on here.
Thank you. So thank you for having us and giving us the time to give this presentation. And thank you for your patience as we navigate the technology piece of this. We do have a presentation prepared, and I am hoping to share it, share my screen. You may have to give me hosting privileges. So do I need to unmute here?
I unmute you, so let's shut the mic off from you for a second. All right, now you should be able to share your screen right here.
Well, I will need, I will also need audio.
I think whatever on your screen should, like, hey, I know you're saying, if I could unmute this. Maybe everyone turn off their mics, so there's no, because what's gonna happen is we should play it. It would be, you know, interference. Okay. Has been there.
Some potential.
Is that the case? There's one mic right on the kitchen. It could be.
And might she just be talking?
Thank you for your patience. The sound is not coming through. Hello, everyone. My name is Annalise Lapitas, and I am the Director of Community Engagement for SCORE, and I am also currently a third-year medical student at the University of Vermont Warner College of Medicine. And today, I'm here to talk to you about an initiative that SCORE has been working on since April of 2021, and that is declaring racism as a public health crisis. So Health Equity Solutions is an organization based out of Hartford, and they have worked on creating a petition to dismantle racism in our state, and they also wrote up and drafted a resolution to declare racism a public health crisis. And now this resolution has been adopted and declared by 22 Connecticut towns and cities. I also wanted to note here that the American Medical Association has adopted new policy regarding this issue. Specifically, I wanted to point out that in their adopted new policy, the American Medical Association recognizes racism in its systemic, cultural, interpersonal, and other forms as a serious threat to public health, to the advancement of health equity, and a barrier to appropriate medical care. So not only is this something that is being, you know, the action is being taken toward at the local level, but also the state and national level, as we see here, too. So how can small decisions lead to structural racism? For example, a board of selectmen of a small town is making policy decisions regarding public transportation funding and logistics in its town. And so the board tries to survey citizens by asking for responses from some local businesses. And then they take those survey responses to design the public transportation. And this is a great research-based method. However, the survey was distributed to businesses generally visited by only one subset of the town's population, meaning that other groups were not accurately represented in those responses, and thus did not have an adequate say in that new policy regarding public transportation that is going to impact them as well. So the new transportation plan leaves out certain populations, and thus they are left without easy access to healthcare, and this can cause them to miss appointments, have longer commutes to facilities, et cetera. And so this just really demonstrates how, you know, certain small decisions lead to structural racism and leaving people's voices out of important policies that impact their health and impacts their lives. And so now I kind of wanted to define the difference between equity and equality, because this comes up extremely often. So as we can see here on the left, equality means that each individual or group of people is given the exact same resources or opportunities. However, not everyone reaches the desired outcome once these resources have been distributed, because not everybody starts with the same advantages. There's varying starting positions and different disadvantages that people start out with, and so not everybody is able to see over the fence, as we can see on the left side. Now, on the right, we have equity. Equity recognizes that each person has different circumstances, and thus allocates the exact resources and opportunities needed to reach an equal outcome, given that some people start with different privileges, while others do not start with those same advantages. And so I really want to highlight here that it's the equal outcome that is the goal that we also often think about and talk about. So the opportunities and resources are distributed as such, so that every person is able to see over the fence, is able to see the exact same thing, reach that equal outcome. So that's the difference between equity and equality when we talk about this. And so here are the social and economic factors that drive health outcomes, and these are referred to as the social determinants of health. And, you know, you can see here we have economic stability, neighborhood and physical environment, education, food, community, and the healthcare system itself. And as we can see here, the gray line running through all of these with racism and discrimination. Racism and discrimination impacts every institution that makes up our society. It causes stress in people's lives in these various different ways. And often, we get the question, what, how does this relate to health? How does racism and discrimination in neighborhood and physical environment, or in education, or access to food, impact health? Well, I want to point out here that while all of these are separate columns and separate institutions, these are very much interconnected. Systems are interconnected and work together and impact each other in various ways, and that's how a society functions. A society is made up of all these different systems, and while they are separate, they very much so impact each other every single day. And so that's how racism and discrimination that, you know, we see in all of these different systems come together and impact people's livelihood, well-being, and health. As we can see here, it impacts mortality, morbidity, life expectancy, and healthcare expenditures. And also, I wanted to note that the CDC notes that 80% of contributors to overall health are actually the social determinants. And as a medical student in my clinical rotations, I see this every single day. I see patients that come from different social situations, where all of these aspects are talked about and impact whether or not they're gonna come back to the hospital. So the students, the doctors, the nurses, and the social workers all meet together and discuss patients. Not only do we talk about, okay, did we treat what they were brought to the hospital for? Did we address their chronic health conditions? But what are the social factors that we are sending people back to that have the potential to bring them back to the hospital? How are the aspects in their environment and the determinants in their everyday lives affecting their health and could potentially bring them back? And so again, here from Health Equity Solutions is their Connecticut Path to Equity, and it really emphasizes that dismantling racist structures allows people the opportunity to live healthy lives. Specifically focusing on this part of the diagram here, this really shows how the Board of Selectmen plays an important role in this. So as we can see here to the top right, anti-racist systems and policymaking, you know, the board is able to dismantle racism through policies and practices that advance racial justice and promote equity. And then, as we can see here, that creates a path for people to be able to be healthy and reach affordability and all of these basic needs. And so the Board of Selectmen does play an important role in policymaking, and thus an important role in this path to health equity. So that brings us to the question of what exactly is a public health crisis? By definition, there are three criteria. It must affect large numbers of people. It must threaten health over the long term, and it requires adoption of large-scale solutions. And so racism impacts the lives of over 100 million people, Black, Indigenous, and people of color in the United States. That's criteria number one. Number two, racism has negatively impacted the lives of BIPOC since, I want to say, before the founding of the United States. So this is extremely long-term and presently an issue today. And lastly, dismantling racism requires work at the institutional level, ranging from healthcare to education to housing, and all policies that, again, interconnect these different institutions and impact people's livelihood and well-being. And our initiative and our discussion here today is really contributing specifically to that third criteria. So folks at the Harvard School of Public Health have really noted the link between racism and health. They have studied this, and how the chronic stress of experiencing discrimination erodes people's well-being over time. Those who have experienced microaggressions develop heart disease more rapidly than others. Stress from frequent racist encounters leads to chronic low-grade inflammation in Black women, and this inflammation leads to health problems, again, like heart disease, also hypertension, diabetes, cancer. Pregnant women who report high levels of discrimination tend to have babies with lower birth weights, and we know that babies who are born with lower birth weights are at higher risk for, for health problems that impact newborns and can potentially impact them as they grow and develop. So a few more specific statistics regarding the health disparities that exist between races in Connecticut. You know, our, our charge really started during the thick of the COVID pandemic, and 23.6% of COVID deaths were Black individuals, while they only made up about 13% of the population. I also want to point out that Black individuals have the highest cancer mortality for all cancers combined. I specifically want to note breast cancer, because we all know someone who has been diagnosed with breast cancer. And while white women are more likely to be diagnosed, Black women are more likely to die from breast cancer. And so we have to stop and think about why these tragic statistics exist. Why is this happening? So what are the next steps? What are the tangible actions that we can take? The Board of Selectmen plays an important role in citizens' health. You impact policy that impacts all the different aspects of town, and these do inevitably impact everyone's individual health. One example here is non-native English-speaking business owners. They might not be specifically aware of particular policies that impact their finances. And so if these non-native English-speaking business owners, you know, and their business is their livelihood and where they get their finances, aren't aware of these policies, that negatively impacts their business. And as we know, healthcare is extremely expensive. Healthy food options are much more expensive than non-healthy food options. You know, affordable housing, which is also mentioned on this list. So, you know, it has a trickle-down effect when it comes to finances, which will inevitably, inevitably boil down to impacting health in a negative way. I also want to point out that Eastline does not have an urgent care in town. And so we have to, you know, remember that we can't assume that everybody has easy access to transportation, can easily get to our neighboring towns and cities that have urgent cares. And so it's really important that the Board of Selectmen thinks about these things and how their citizens' health is impacted by, for example, not having an urgent care in town. We really have to think about these different decisions that impact the bigger picture. And so something that we've thought of is reviewing policies through an equity lens. And I really want to credit one of our directors at SCORE, Serena Valentin, for providing this list of questions that serves as sort of a checklist at the elementary school where she teaches. You know, so we ask really important questions here. Who does this decision affect positively? Who does this decision affect negatively? How might this ignore or worsen existing disparities? And so on and so forth. And so when reviewing policy, having this list in front of you as a checklist, you know, you're able to really stop and think about equity here, and who is this impacting, and really making sure it is integrated into the conversation. And I want to mention here that because the lived experience of board members who have not dealt with racism, you know, these questions are not going to automatically come to the forefront of your mind unless this has been your life experience. You know, if, if you haven't gone through, you know, the racism and discrimination, like, these are not going to automatically be at the forefront when reviewing policy. And so that's why having a physical tangible task, such as a list of these questions, to be done when discussing, developing, and passing policy, this will bring it to the front of the conversation. It will be an important part of the conversation. And, you know, if you haven't had to think about it in the past, this checklist helps make sure that this is brought up every single time you review and pass a policy. And while it seems like such a small action, I can assure you that it will have a large impact, and that is why it is so important. So what's next for Eastline? Some towns are creating committees to review policies through an equity lens, as we just mentioned. Others are hiring consultants to review their decisions. So that's what our neighbors are doing. What will the Eastline Board of Selectmen do? I want to thank you for listening to us tonight, and we're open to any and all questions that you have. Thank you.
I don't know if you could.
We're back on.
We're back.
Mics are live.
Correct.
Yeah, no, I don't hear that.
Was this presentation? Shared, okay. So we can share this presentation with you, or we can simply forward you.
No, this, this presentation was electronically shared. It doesn't have the video, but it has all the slides.
Does it have all the slides?
Well, it doesn't have this last slide that has the questions on it.
That's, that's the one I think that we need.
Yeah, it had at least a couple of slides that were not in our, our, either online or packet presentation.
Yeah, we should probably also get this screen down until we're back up now, too.
Yes.
If you, Kevin, do that.
Right.
Yeah, a few months from now, this will be, I mean, like, oops.
So it was hardest the first time, right?
Yes, exactly.
Oh, okay. So people on Zoom are saying they can't hear.
You have to remember, we're muted in the corner there.
Can they hear now?
Yes, we can hear.
Good. So, okay, the one thing is, you will be able to get a copy of the presentation and the slides and so forth like that. That'd be helpful and so forth like that. Any questions or comments anyone would like to come forward?
Yeah, I thought it was an excellent presentation. I did review everything that you'd given us ahead of time. I guess something that, that I see just through my experience, I worked in corporate law for a while, and what we, what we did was, we started going out to bid in RFP, and we had a policy where we had to get minority vendors. And what that did was, it increased the competition, and it enabled us to get better pricing. And basically, we got better goods and services, because it increased the competition, and it was, it was a really, it was amazing to me that everything kind of, everybody stepped up, you know, when we did that. So it was actually a win-win situation. So that's something that, you know, we could do as a possible positive action.
I would love to give you all an opportunity to ask any questions that you may have. Not only am I available to answer them, but the majority of our board directors is also here on Zoom, and they can jump in and help me answer questions that you may have.
One thing, I, back in June, when Serena and I first started exchanging some emails, I indicated, I know you meet with the police chief a few times a year with questions, and I offered, I'd be very willing to sit down and, you know, to take questions or have a discussion a few times a year, whenever we could, and we could do that Zoom, too. And if it was just a few of us, it probably wouldn't be as difficult. But anyway, I'd be, I'd be very willing to do that, because, you know, you know, I look at some of the things, and I try, I try very hard whenever I think about something, how it will impact everybody, like the transportation one. We don't have as good a public transportation in this town as we could. The ones we do, the buses will stop everywhere. You just have to flag it down when it's going by, and it has still been free ridership for a while. I don't know how much longer that's gonna be, but that's still going on. And, you know, I think, we know we have some vaccines coming up locally and so forth like that. We can put those out. And we do actually put them, when we know about them, on the, the message boards out here. So I think we tried to, you know, look into this and so forth like that. But we're always, always willing to have a discussion. If there's something that's of concern, bring it to our attention, and it'll definitely be addressed, so.
And I think that the idea here is not necessarily a specific, like, we, a specific policy that, that we have in mind that we want you to look at, but rather putting a safeguard in place so that every time you make a policy, it's being looked at through an equity lens. So, I'm, sorry. I think they want to jump in.
Okay.
Do you want to go to Serena? She has her.
Please.
Yeah, well, yeah.
All right, Serena, excuse you.
I wasn't sure if anyone else had any more questions, but I think if I may kind of pose the question again at the end of the presentation, while some towns have formed committees that are specifically addressing this issue, and some towns have hired consultants specifically addressing this issue, do, what are some ideas that we can think of now to grow more in this area? Because I don't think any of us are saying that everything that we've done up until this point has been negative. Of course not. We've done a lot of amazing work in this town, and we know that there's never an intention to do any of these things, but growth means looking forward of how we can be even better, and how we can change in new ways to address things that maybe we haven't thought about in the past. So what are some ideas that you have thought of or can think of for us to move this forward?
Attorney Cunningham and Mr. Siri, you're on the subcommittee for us and to represent the town, to go up with some ideas. And I assume we've met a couple of times?
Not.
Not recently, but we have.
Anne, Anne Santoro's sort of taking my place, because.
Yeah, right. Anne and I met the other day.
Yeah.
Right. Dan and I have met on a couple of occasions in the last month. And then I met Nikki for the first time about a week or so ago, and Serena and I had a conversation this past weekend. So, so that, that's good, because that gave me the, the foundation of, you know, your, your efforts, get a clearer view. Because, you know, I had gone to your website, I had looked at materials, but that was, that was important to have those conversations that Dan had previously had. So, I mean, there's, there's a number of ways of, you know, of, of addressing some of your concerns. I, it'd be great to get those slides with the list of, and you and I actually talked about some of those, Nikki, you know, whether it was affordable housing and, and so forth. But I do think, and this is a point I made to you and it as well as to Serena, that it's probably very helpful, although you're taking a sort of generic view at this point, and a generic request about looking, us looking at items and policy and ordinances. and a generic request about looking, us looking at items and policy and ordinances through a lens. You may wish to begin with a particular issue. So it might be affordable housing. Because for us as a board, too, and for the town, I mean, the shortest, you know, distance between two points is the straight line. So, so for example, if you, if you feel as though that's an area that's fertile for the kinds of concerns that you would like, or issues you'd like to see addressed, then by all means, you know, for example, I, we were talking about how there's the consultant that has now been hired. This is all by state law because we've got to reexamine our affordable housing policies. This is through, you know, all of Connecticut. This is, it's not units East Line. Or issues like if you, you know, whether it's, you know, beach passes or whatever your particular issue might be, you know. I think it's very helpful for you as a group to, to take, to take the narrow, you know, take that little bit narrow approach. And then that may open up other doors for you, too. But because it's, I think it's just difficult for us to just have, you know, blanket resolution, blanket approach, because we do, we definitely deal on, on issue-by-issue basis. You know, some things involve us a lot.
I think the idea is that you would look at every issue through this lens.
Right.
So it's not the idea to pick and choose, but to have a safeguard in place, a checklist, or a subcommittee, or a consultant. There's many different ways to do it to ensure that every single policy you make is equitable.
Right.
That's the idea.
And some. Yeah, if I could finish my thought, yeah, thanks. I think when I've spoken on the topic a little bit at the January meeting that we had, January of '22, January 5th of '22, a, a point I made was there's a lot in place that's not discussed. So for example, human resources in our town has by law so much that it, it is required to do. And it's looking through a lot of lenses. And we have departments, you know, when we go out, when we do go out to bid, and we have a contractor, that contractor has to, has, and subcontractors, it has to go through that, that system, which is very similar to what's happening in HR. So, and there are a number of these things in place. We have the whole police department. You've been dealing very well with Chief Mike, and you know about the Police Accountability Act. So there's a lot of, there are a lot of things in place. It's, it's, you know, that are already happening. And the question is, what about, you know, you raised the issue, what about other issues? So, and, yeah, I haven't, you know, my own thoughts are in formation. But one point I did make to you is that it's, I think it's hard for the, for the Board of Selectmen to govern by way of resolution. I think that's tough. But more than that, in that resolution, if we're discussing that a bit, you know, some issues concerning equity versus equality, you know, this is not, is not like a meeting of the minds on all definitions, all things. So I think that's a bit of a problem. Plus, we, I think, too, and I discussed this with Dan, as a board, it's a bit difficult to see something through one lens and not multiple lenses. And I know that other members, Bill Weber had mentioned this back in January at our meeting. You know, we have other protected classes that we are required to make sure we're not discriminated against. So if we have a lens of one thing, we may need multiple lenses.
Well, the lens is equity, equity for all. We're, we're not, you know, we, we don't, we represent racial and, and social equity as, for our group. However, we're talking about an equity lens for all groups. We want equity for all. That's the idea. But I want to make sure that.
I wanted to give, let's have Annalise, because Serena already went, so we'll let Annalise go first and then go back to Serena.
Okay, thank you. Can you guys hear me okay?
Very good.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay. Well, again, just thank you for listening to our presentation, taking the time to talk with us. I think one thing I, I do want to say to, well, to the first point of not necessarily knowing exactly what policies that this will be applied to, I think just having it in, in place in the first place is kind of the, the whole point, is that it's there for all policies. So you don't really have to have those policies, like, known right now what you're going to use this for. The idea more so is that you have it there to use for every single policy to address. And some policies, it's going to be really easy to go through this checklist. And some policies, it's going to take more discussion. But I think that's kind of, the, the point of it is that, you know, you use it with the policies that you're discussing. So that's, that's kind of the first thing I wanted to mention. But then also, you know, if there are these things that are in place, I, I commend that there are things that HR is doing or that the police department is doing. I think, you know, but ma- making sure that those things are clearly communicated to folks, because I think a lot of times people might not know what, what things are happening in this realm in certain aspects of the community, such as like HR. I know a lot of people wouldn't know that. I know I didn't know about that. So having really clear communication about those things that do already exist. And then lastly, because I also want to let Serena share as well, you know, I've, I've, you, I've talked about this and things I've done at school regarding anti-racism in medical education. And we had a committee specifically focusing on that. We were making recommendations regarding our faculty development, our learning environment, and our medical curriculum to the dean of the medical college and other administration. And one of the things that we put in, you know, our goals and recommendations for, you know, how we really bring anti-racism into these aspects of the, of the college is, you know, that while we are advocating for anti-racism, and that is our area of expertise, and that's, you know, the cause that we are fighting for, we do believe in equity for all groups that are experiencing marginalization and oppression. And so in this work that I did at my, my school is, you know, these goals and recommendations can be applied to other areas and other movements as well, to other social issues. So it can be applied to socioeconomic status, to LGBTQ plus issues, to women's issues. You know, so while we are, you know, an anti-racism group, a racial equity organization, we believe in, like Nikki said, equity for all. And a lot of these questions that were in that checklist, you know, that's why it's, that's why it's such a, a simple but impactful thing to do is because it can be applied to other groups that you want to advocate for as well. And so I think, you know, it, it is already a potential, you know, working solution to help equity for other groups as well. So, you know, I, I hope that might potentially clarify that. It does work for other, for other causes, too.
And if I could just piggyback on that. Sometimes the answer is going to be yes. Sometimes the answer is going to be, yes, we do meet this criteria. So we're not saying that every policy you make doesn't meet the criteria. The idea is that you have the criteria and that you are measuring it up against this criteria for every policy. And sometimes the answer is going to be, yes, it meets the criteria of being equitable for all.
Serena, Serena still has her hand up.
Hi, thank you. The first thing that I wanted to point out was that I think based on not only the equity visual, but also just the equal outcome of equity, is that giving attention to certain areas who have been discriminated against doesn't take away from other groups of people. It just adds more equity and equality for everyone to bring us all to the same place. So I think it's important to point out that equity doesn't mean more for some people taking away from other people. It's more bringing attention to things that have been a problem in order to make sure that everything is as it should be and is equal as it can be. And the other thing I wanted to bring up is that the declaration of racism as a public health crisis is an action item. And I think for a town like East Lime to say racism is a public health crisis, and we acknowledge that, just like they did at the state level, just like they did at the national level, that is a message to families of color, to all people of color, that the town of East Lime cares about their issues, that the town of East Lime sees how these things can impact their lives. And it welcomes people into the town to create a more diverse community as well. And we think about, why is East Lime still 80% populated by white families and white people? And that can go back all the way to the town's inception. But why haven't those numbers changed? And why has the demographics of the people in this town stayed the same for so long? And part of that might be because we aren't creating those messages that say East Lime cares about the issues of people of color and families of color. Last thing I want to say is just that, would, it's more of a question. Would the board be willing to create a subcommittee where we could discuss these things further, more specifically? And like Ann said, maybe focus more on specific policy, policies, just like she was saying we should do? Would there be potential for us to have a subcommittee we could be a part of, or that other people could be hired to do as well?
I'll get to that in just a minute, but one suggestion, and Ann, you and I talked about this a couple of days ago. Back in October, we had the Indigenous People Day. Naniatic Native Nation members were here. That was a great interactive event. I learned so much about what Wigwamirakwas. I mean, you all, it was a rock, we all know it, no one's ever supposed to swim out, but you always do. And we, they wanted to build a fire. We learned that that was where they used to build signal fires, which was a calling for people to come and meet. And for the first time in over 300 years, they lit that fire to, this year. And we learned, talking to Mark Strickland, he lives in Bridgeport, but he's a member of the nation. And he pointed out that, they were talking about veterans and so forth. Naniatic Native Americans have served in every military conflict we have had since the Revolutionary War. I learned so much. You look out of the Walk Out of the Darkness event we had earlier this fall, suicide awareness. I think events like that would, if we could come up with something like that to where it's an educational event, because it's educational and inspiring. And I think it helps out. And it's, it's an event where people come and they talk, rather than a presentation like this, you sit and they talk to each other. It was really enlightening, and both, both of you were there. And that was a really fun event. And moving forward with that, too. So regarding meetings and talking, hiring someone, probably not, because I always look at, I always look at the budget and I always say no to that. But I think we definitely, definitely need to have a line of communication to where we can talk more about this on a regular basis. Annalise, last year, I mean, we talked a lot about the issues, but we just talked about what was going on. I learned a lot about you, you learned a lot about me. And I think that helps break down a lot of barriers to where you. Nikki, you and I have had some discussions, really fun. And you were amazed that I knew you were getting your Masters of Arts, that you, that I remembered that. But, you know, I, I think that's just it. I think we'll work, Dan and Ann will reach out to you. We'll keep talking, communication. We can identify things and move forward. I definitely don't want to stop talking. We want to keep going. I don't think anyone has any issue with that. But any other comments?
Yeah, I mean, my vision in, in forever, but in January and still today, is I think we need a holistic view. I mean, the presentation kind of started going off into the discrimination. Instead of talking about racism, it's more about discrimination to me, right? It's about the LGBTQ community. It's about veteran needs. It's about special need children. It's about, it's just about treating everybody the same. To have a, I think, a standalone document that's going to talk just about one element is counterproductive. If we were to take all these thoughts and bake them into our bylaws or the ethics policy and things like that, where it's holistic, it covers everything all the time, it's not like a rolodex that says, okay, I got this group, let's see, what's the rules for that group, right? It's like, it's about treating everybody equally all the time. And not just a situational awareness of, okay, in this situation, I got to look at the rules for this group because I have somebody I'm talking to now that's in this category and da-da-da. It just, to me, it makes more, more sense to have a holistic view and a holistic document that covers, like I said, ethics policy or our board's bylaws or something like that, is, I think, the right place to put something like this.
And just, I'll pass this on, then we'll go back to Annalise, she has her hand up. Oh, I'm sorry, Ben, your hand is like over the window, so it's really hard to see in your house there. So anyway, we had a person, a, a, a group looking at purchasing the Morton House. One of the things they, and it, it just got too cost prohibitive, but one of the things they wanted to do was renovate and restore it to make it to where people would be a destination. But they said, one of the things they did not want to do was displace the, the special needs and, you know, people with disabilities in there. They said they did not want to have to make them move out of where they were because, yeah, we can find another place for them, but downtown Manic is a very nice place to be if, if, if you have some limited mobility. So it was really nice to hear they brought this up. They brought up that we want to improve this facility, but we don't want to displace the people there. So I thought that was, you know, it shows that some people are thinking beyond what, you know, the bottom line and the dollar line. So Annalise, you've already talked, Ben has, and we'll let him go, and then come back to you.
Yeah, hi, hi, everyone. Yeah, I think just to reiterate, you know, and we'll send over the slides at some point, but the example questions that were on one of their final slides there, you'll notice they don't focus in on any one group. So I think there's been, seems to be a hyper-focus on, or hyper-focus, I believe that we are hyper-focused on one group, when you'll notice that the questions themselves are phrased such that it's a lens that creates equality via equity. So that is across groups. Now, we, again, are focused on the racial element because it's difficult for a single organization to focus on all possible marginalized groups. We're coming at this through a racial lens. But the, the means of achieving equity benefit all groups. So we're not saying that you need to set a, set a set of rules for who you're speaking to or something or about, but rather a, a set of, you know, reminders for any given decision that we should consider who this is affecting in which ways. Now, one of the examples from the presentation that Annalise gave was about business owners in East Lime who speak English as a non-first language. Now, this is a, a true, a true issue that was brought to us by a prominent East Lime lawyer, who said she is overwhelmed by the amount of cases in East Lime of English as second language business owners who come to her because they violated some policy that they were unaware of. Now, this is a super problematic issue that is especially frustrating because of how easy it is to fix. And what we can do as a, as a group, what you all can do as a board, you hold this immense power to be able to make a very simple change. And when you're going through a policy decision like that, you can think, okay, how would this policy affect? Let's think about people who speak English as a second language. Oh, they might have trouble deciphering legalese. And so then we can talk about different solutions to that problem. So there's kind of a concrete example of it. But that can apply to a whole bunch of different groups. And so I don't want you all to get hyper-focused on trying to set rules or, or something based on who you're talking to. That's not the business that we're in. The business that we're in is equality via equity.
Thank you, Ben. Annalise?
Ben, that was so perfectly said. So, you know, I mean, like, like Ben was saying, I don't really have to re-explain it. That was perfect. You know, the question, the questions can be applied to multiple groups. And just, you know, we are a racial equity group. And, and we care about equity for all marginalized groups. I think those two things are existing at the same time here. And so we would be happy to talk about how, you know, these questions and this. And so we would be happy to talk about how, you know, these questions and this equity lens can be applied to make for that equity is being a policy for all groups. And so, you know, when we say through an equity lens, equity doesn't only apply to issues regarding racism. So we say through an equity lens, you know, that's, that's going to be a holistic process that's taken, um, when you ask those questions and view policy through that lens. Equity, just equity, not, not only racial equity, all equity. Um, and, you know, I, I do want to also kind of, I know, um, someone mentioned, you know, that the, the presentation, we kind of talked about discrimination and racism. And I just want to point out that, you know, racism and discrimination go hand in hand. And, you know, one is the foundation of another. And, and so, um, not all discrimination, discrimination, you know, again, all marginalized groups experience discrimination, but when we're talking about racism, you know, discrimination does stem from that. And so I do really want to, you know, reiterate that racism is a very big problem. Discrimination stems from that, and it is also a very big problem. I don't want to diminish, you know, how, how impactful discrimination can be on people's wellbeing, both physically and mentally. A lot of what, you know, I talked about in the presentation was about physical health, but we could have a whole other conversation, the same length of time, about mental health. Um, and hopefully that is something that we can talk about. And lastly, when I initially raised my hand, I do want to just say that, you know, I appreciate you saying that, you know, we need to keep having these conversations. We can do events where we talk to each other and we get to know each other because, you know, when you make personal connections and hear about people's point of view, like that's, that's how you learn. And, and I think I just really want to reiterate that, you know, having these continuous conversations is extremely important. You know, we, it, it took a long time for us to get here, but we're here. And so I really don't want us to slow down the momentum. Um, because, you know, things happen and, and that, that's okay. Um, I just really want to make sure that, you know, this is something that is of priority and that, you know, we do stay in, in pretty consistent communication because I think that's how these things are going to be achieved. It's, it's great to want to do them. It's even better to actually, you know, follow through and do them. So I think we're all just really hoping to continue this relationship and to continue to get to know each other and hear about each other's experiences because that's how you learn the most. And, you know, I think it'll, again, just show people that you really care about them and their livelihood. Not only their mental wellbeing, but their physical as well. And I think it, sending a message like this is more powerful, I think, than people often realize, so.
Thank you. It looks like Serena still has her hand up too.
Thank you, sorry, I'll, I'll try to be quick. But, um, one thing I do want to say that we've been talking about equity across all marginalized groups. I do want to bring up the word intersectionality. It means that several people can belong to many different marginalized groups. So if we're talking about racism as a focus for our group, that doesn't exclude LGBTQ plus folks or people who are disabled or any of those other things because there are Black, Indigenous, and people of color who belong to all of those groups, who belong to the LGBTQ plus group and to people who are disabled or elderly or veterans and all of those different things. So when we're talking about racism, it's not on an island, and it's not its own separate idea. It has a hand in everything, just like people can have a hand in multiple different areas of their life, and they're marginalized in different ways. The last thing I want to bring up is that I am worried a little bit that we will leave this meeting with no sense of an action step or item that might happen or come out of this meeting. And while I love to have these conversations, and I think it's so important for us to be having these conversations, just like Annalise said, I think I would appreciate a collaboration on some kind of action that we can take that is possible or a plan for an action. And I know the idea of maybe a committee was shut down because of funding, but if there's something that we can do to help make a group or committee or a regular meeting with you guys about this specific topic, that is what I think is most important because conversations are awesome. But the only thing that's going to affect the community in a, in a meaningful way is consistent efforts, so.
I, I totally agree with you, Serena. Before, I think Dan and Anne Santoro will be good points. And we'll look at, you know, and let's, you know, to be honest with you, between now and Christmas, it could be tough to get anything done because it's, we're hitting the holiday season. But I would think I'd love to have, you know, come back with some type of next step early in, in January because, you know, I want to, you know, discuss this before we get into our budget cycle because that gets busy. But have something there that will address moving forward. And we all have each other's emails, you have mine. Reach out to me anytime, I'll get back to you as quick as I can. But I would anticipate talking to them and then moving forward and seeing what, what can be a next step. You know, we won't agree totally on everything, but we do agree that you have a topic that needs to be addressed, and we're willing to work with you and move forward with it, so, anyway. And Ben, I haven't seen you with that long a hair ever, I don't think, so. When you cut it, Ben, send it my way, please, because, you know.
Will do.
Okay, okay, thank you so much. We'll be in touch with you. Nikki, thank you for doing the presentation and for navigating through all the technology because now you're an expert.
I just pressed play, Annalise did the presentation.
Okay, good presentation, and, and thank you for, you have brought us into the, uh, into the hybrid world. So thank you very much for doing that, so.
Before we sign off, I would just like to weigh in a little bit.
Please, Dan.
And I'll be brief.
Dan, you and I have been involved.
I waited till the end because I wanted to hear everything. I think one of the challenges of SCORE and, and other groups that are advocacy groups for, for this issue is to better define equity and distinguish it from equality. And I think there are many misconceptions as to what that really means. And to get a group of people to accept a new idea, I think you have to have a very clear definition and a way to describe it that helps people to understand. I liked the graphic that you had with the equality graphic and the equity graphics looking over the fence. But one thing I, I, I learned today, I'm a member of Rotary, Rotarian, and Rotary International has adopted diversity, equity, and inclusion as one of their main fundamental threats of, of change in the world. And, uh, and they're, you know, they're, they're handing that down to the local clubs. And we had a discussion today, and I was very interested to hear members describe what they thought equity means. And there's much confusion as, as to what it really means. So I think to advance the idea, um, maybe a more articulate and, and better examples for people to understand would be worthwhile. And so I would encourage that, and that will help us in moving forward. That's, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone. We'll, for everything, Nikki, again, great job on the.
On pressing play?
Pushing play, so, anyway.
Thank you again.
Okay, you're welcome to step and watch us for the rest of the meeting, but we perfectly understand if you head off to do whatever. Annalise, I'm sure you're busy, and I'm sure everyone else is too, Serena. So thank you again for coming to see us.
Take care, everyone.
Have a good time, we'll be in, talking to you, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, no, Nikki, you don't get to leave, you don't.
Thanks, Nikki.
Okay. Okay, uh, moving on, uh, next thing is to approve the 2023 Board of Selectmen meeting schedule. Last year, we didn't do it till our first meeting, and then we found out that there has to be thirty days between the adoption of it, so our first meeting in January was technically a special meeting, so.
They're always special.
Okay, yes, Dan, okay, go ahead.
So, yeah, move to approve the 2023 Board of Selectmen meeting schedule as presented.
Your second.
Second.
Okay. Any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, take carries unanimously. Moving on, we have to schedule a special town meeting. The Board of Finance moved forward all three items from the, uh, that we'd sent to them for consideration.
Okay, so, uh, move the Town of Eastlime Notice of Special Meeting. Notice is hereby given of a special town meeting of the Town of Eastlime to be held on December seventh, 2022 at seven PM Eastern Time at the Eastlime Town Hall Upper Meeting Room for the following purposes. One, to consider and act upon a special expenditure of eighty-four thousand, eighty-four dollars from account thirty-two dash ninety-nine dash zero nine four dash nine hundred dash zero zero two, parentheses, learned rental fees for the purchase and installation of a new, new hot water heater for the Eastlime Middle School. Two, to consider and act upon a special expenditure of fifty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-six cents from account thirty-two dash ninety-nine dash zero nine four dash nine hundred dash zero zero two, learned rental fees for the purchase of a 2022 F-350 Supercab four-wheel-drive pickup truck with a Tommy Gate, Liftgate, and a Boss V snowplow attachment. Three, to consider and act upon a special expenditure of thirteen thousand, one forty-six dollars and fifty cents from account thirty-two dash thirty dash four hundred dash seven hundred dash seven twenty-seven, parentheses, NIPS grant expenditures for the purchase of two HC5 SC 5.5 double station garbage slash recycle containers. And four, to transact any other business proper to come before the meeting dated at Eastlime, Connecticut, the sixteenth day of November, 2022, Eastlime Board of Selectmen.
Your second.
Second.
Second by Dan, all those, any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, take carries unanimously. Just to note, you know, I believe Chris Lund said that the, uh, that hot water heater could fail at any time. He was a self-fulfilling prophecy, it failed today, so it is being replaced right now. So, uh, so they are going to have to take money out of their budget to pay for that right now, and then they'll reimburse it once this does, but it has become, and obviously that is a shelter too, so, uh, that's that too. Yeah, the last.
Did we do the approval for minutes? Did I miss?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, the last thing, discussion is Dominion Building. We had told Dominions, you know, way back in, I think, January that we weren't interested in that. They had not really moved to, to, to sell it or anything like that, and they were planning on doing it this month. But last month, the Main Street Organization came to me and a couple other people too, said, with the Yale Sharette Study, before we do this, can we at least look at it and see if there's some ideas for having that as some type of a different, uh, you know, put something else here or some ideas of what might else be able to go there? Because if it goes commercially, there's a very good chance it would turn into something similar to like the building by Sift Bakery where the first floor would be, um, commercials, and there'd probably be a couple floors of condos. And it'd probably be a little bit bigger than the current footprint that's there now, which that's the one area on Main Street there is a view. Uh, some people have said we could put a, probably fit a small mini golf course there, like a nine-hole miniature golf course, and they actually showed how it would fit. Someone else has like a learning center to where you could come. It could be an interactive place where you might sell it and have somebody develop it and so forth. So, um, I met with Wheezy, that's not her name, her name is Mary Louise, from Dominion, and I said, if we asked you to put a pause on this for a few months. And she said, no, not a problem at all, if you want to four or five more months to think about it. So, um, I was just going to see what the feeling was here. Do we let the Sharette Study play out and see if there is some idea for it? They're not worried about the fact that it'll, you know, they not interested in feeling it needs to be sold in the next month or anything like that. I've talked to Joe Berga, it's electric heat, so we're not talking about a whole lot of stuff for winterization of it, just draining the pipes. We wouldn't have to go through it if it was oil heat or something like that. It isn't, it's, it's, it wouldn't cost almost anything to winterize it, so there would be no expense for that. So I just wanted to get some input from the board before, you know, we finally say, yep, we'll give, uh, the Sharette Study in Main Street to see what they think.
Well, I thought the challenge with holding that property was the potential cleanup potential.
Yeah, and we were able to get some, Bill Scher has got some photos back from the mid-seventies with Transformers in the back lot. Dominion didn't even have those photos, they do now. I was able to give them, uh, make a copy of it and give it to them. So there's a, there's a possibility that there is some PCBs there. The good thing about them is they don't go anywhere, they stay right where they are. The bad thing is, is the, the removal and destruction of them can be expensive, and you wouldn't know what that is until you move forward. So that's one of the things that we could possibly do is start looking forward for Brownfield Grant too, to take a look at, you know, the first step just identifies where the, if the contamination sneaks and so forth. So we could do that. Granted that.
On that point, we did pay for a study, Brownfield Study, actually, we put in for a grant. So there's already been a lot of paperwork done on that, we didn't get the grant.
Well, that wasn't for that piece of property we have, we haven't done one for that.
For the Dominion property, yes.
When did we do that?
I can't give you an exact time, but we, there was quite a bit of work done, and we applied for a grant that was going to, that was available through the state, but we didn't get the grant.
Okay.
So I'm just saying, somebody does some research.
Yeah, well, there might, we might be able, you know, there are more grants out there now. It hasn't been, I know, in the last year. But we could take a look at that. And granted, we are not getting any tax revenue right now, but it's not as if we're removing some money from the, uh, from tax revenues now. We're not getting it at all anyway now. So I just want to see what the feeling was. Do we give a little time, or do we, uh, then explore what their options or ideas might be? And here again, if someone's going to identify it, we might ask for some help in cleaning it up too because Brownfield identifies it, and then the second grant you could get would be the cleanup, which takes a while to do. But I just want to get the feeling from the board before we say, what I tell that to Main Street and people that are, would like us to consider holding on to it. Not so much for us to sell it to get some revenue, but to keep it, as someone said, we don't want to be mystic, we want to be Niantic. And that is a nice area that if it was nothing there, you'd have a nice view of Long Island, so.
So that was my, that's my concern, is that last time we had this conversation, we said we didn't want it because of the cleanup. So if nothing's changed, I would think nothing's changed.
I guess my question would be, what's the potential cost or liability for the town? You know, that, that's just.
If, okay, if, if, and I did, I talked to Ed O'Connell, I talked to our town attorney. If we sold it as is, if we did, if there was a buyer for it and was willing to develop it, um, you know, for something that would be, we would like, if they, they could buy it as is, and that could be fine. But the problem would be if that developer ever went bankrupt or something like that, it would revert back to us for cleanup. If, if they said, no, we have, look, we have all this money, and we can pay for the cleanup, and they, and it turns out to be more than they thought, but they have the money for it, we're still in good shape there. It's if, all of a sudden, they've purchased it, they can't make the cleanup, and they, and they lose their money source or their funding, that's when it would fall back to the town.
It falls back to us, even if, even if you sell it as is.
As is, if, if, if that happens, so.
I mean, it could require a performance bond for the.
Right, and that, that's one of the things we could do.
And that would give us a level of protection in, in the event that there's a reversion back to the town.
I think, yeah, I think we had that discussion at one point about, once you're in the chain, I think you brought that up, Dan.
Yeah, chain and title.
That's why I didn't understand why Dominion falls out of that chain because they owned it, right? So we own it after them, but they owned it before us, so they're still in the chain.
Yeah.
So it should fall back to them anyway.
Yeah, we're also, it would include us.
It would include.
It would, you know, we'd be a, we'd be a happy couple. On something like that. But, you know, I guess that I have had this request for, you know, keeping it, you know, to explore other possibilities and just to sell to a developer, which will not be hard for Dominion. But, you know, at least, but something that we'd have a little bit more control.
So the answer to your question, because I just talked, I didn't really give you an answer. I was for keeping it before, I'm still for keeping it.
Okay.
I'm just concerned that I was talked out of it because of the cleanup cost, so.
And again, what was the, what was the timeframe for the, um, for the Sharette Study?
Uh, they'll have, they're, they're doing their fact gathering right now. We should have something by, uh, late, late winter type of thing. And, and as I said, Dominion is, is fine with giving us a pause on looking at this a little bit. Because it, it's something I do, I, uh, last night I taught, I had, was at the annual dinner, uh, meeting for the Public Trust, and that's where several ideas came up, several people. approached in that, I've been approached by other people in town, Main Street has approached saying that, you know, we don't want to just have a big, you know, box there.
If, if we can have more control over what goes in there, that's great, that's wonderful, as long as everybody understands that there's a potential cleanup, and the town doesn't want to be holding the bag for that.
No, that's true.
That's-
And that's it too, and here again, you know, yeah, it could generate some revenue, but it's revenue we don't have right now anyway.
Like getting people downtown generates revenue.
Yeah, it, it does, and it, and the thought is something that would be an interactive thing that would, you know, a restaurant would be great, but that's, you come down, you eat dinner, you go home. So I, you know.
Well, you know, we, Main Street made it through COVID, and life is coming back, and there's some, you know, some new businesses that are down there, some new restaurants. And I think it's important for us to maybe take our time a little bit, get the benefit of information that we've already, we're already paying for, we've ordered this study.
Shorette Study, exactly.
The Shorette Study, and so let's get the, the most out of that study by benefiting from their perspective and what they suggest. And if, and if we can buy some time, we haven't taken on any liability.
Nope.
They, they lost revenue that we might have gotten from taxes, alright, so we're going to lose a little bit on that. But that's small potatoes, considering our, our job to, to try to maintain the vibrancy of Main Street-
I agree.
-in our town. So I think that's incumbent upon us to, to see this through and, and maybe hold off a little bit and make a better decision.
Okay.
And I, I, I agree, I do.
Thank you.
Definitely would like to see the Shorette Study, because it's a little more holistic approach to, to what's, what's happening on Main Street and this particular piece of property and elsewhere in town. And then, oh, just a question I have for you, Kevin, is, are they, you mentioned some people who expressed interest, you know, or concerns, so is, is the Shorette Study, folks, are they connecting?
I, I, what I'm doing is I'm focusing everybody, turning everybody to the Shorette Study.
Perfect.
Yeah, I, I don't want to become the-
Get their input.
The middleman on that, no, I've said it that way too, so.
Okay.
No, it was, it was, because, you know, a lot of interest in it and so forth like that. One of the things too is, interesting is, I was talking with Sue Comro, with Main Street Organization, and this was really impressive, is the number of businesses on Main Street in one sixty-one and that that are owned by women, it's really amazing how many.
Nice.
You know, Mermaid Liquors, Family Pizza, Devs on Main, just more and more mix upstairs you go up. And I pointed out that the three banks I deal with on a regular basis have women, so I, I'm just really impressed by that, so. I think we know why the town's getting, doing better, so.
So I guess I would say there's no harm in waiting, because you're just waiting a few months.
Right.
And then we can readdress it in a, in a few months.
Yeah, and, and, and my thanks to Dominion too, because they were all set to, to go with this, but I talked to Mark Powers, who's, lives in town, lobbyist, and Dominion's a client of his, he said, "We'd be great to meet with you," and I asked, and it was extremely cordial, and we very much appreciate that, you know, the ability too, so. And the nice thing is too, is now we, I still get to use it for the Holiday Stroll, they're going to use that front part of it for something, as well as, there's one bathroom in there, right? So, anyway, okay. Okay, that's it, moving on, exit fisher reports, and go ahead, I'll start with, Roseanne, we'll start with you, and I have my comments written down someplace, I may have left them in my office.
Zoning's going to be meeting tomorrow night, their usual meeting night, and other than that, I don't have anything particularly.
Okay, well, I'll go next. I attended the Parks and Recs Commission on November tenth, and there was a lot of discussion about, you know, they're, they're well aware of the charter revision study, and they had a long discussion about the idea of, would it be a good idea to advocate for combining youth services and Eastline Parks and Recreation? So they're sort of going through that process and deciding if that makes good sense.
Could I add to that?
Yes.
Pat Larkin came in to talk to me, and I talked, we could be able to do that by an ordinance, so we can have that done fairly quickly, rather than-
Charter revision?
Yeah.
And that was the, and I didn't have all the answers to the, when I was there, and, that's good to know.
Yeah.
And, and so if they do make the decision that, that that's something good, then it sounds like it can be accomplished sooner rather than later.
Very soon, yeah.
That's good news.
So Parks and Rec used to handle this before we had youth services, so kind of stepped back in time.
Well, the other thing was that their budget, the, the way the budget is set up, youth services is really part of and inside the Parks and Recreation Budget, so it's, you know, that's where the, that's where the rubber hits the tires, where the money is, so I, I don't, I don't, myself, I don't see a problem in doing it, but that's, that's their, that's their business and the decisions.
Are we still getting some state funds for youth services?
Yes, and that, that, we're making sure that the ordinance we have for that is going to be incorporated.
And that's a concern.
Yes.
And would, I think that it should also be researched to see if it is combined, if we don't have a separate youth services, that we would lose the grant money.
No, we would not, as long as the board that is charged with that has seven members or more recovered, and Parks and Rec has seven members.
And they did begin to address that and, and try to figure that out, but I, it sounds like that's exactly right.
Yeah, PAC came in early, Monday to talk to me about it.
So that was, that was the biggest thing that they were discussing, and they're very excited about the, the study and starting to move forward up in Darrell's Pond area, so they're, they've got a lot of energy and ideas for that. That's about it. Oh, the, oh, one other thing about the, you know, we had the tent and the tent cat destroyed, but the new tent kept it, the other one lasted a long time, but the new one only lasted a couple of weeks. And it sounds like, you know, they've gotten reimbursed for most, if not all of that. But the question is, what do they do in the future? Do they go with another tent? Do they go with a, you know, a stick-built, some sort of a structure? And they're, they're discussing that, and then of course, there's some deed restriction issues that have to be addressed, and they have to be very careful about that, and they're well aware of it, and, but they're in, in that discussion right now, figure out what the best thing to do in the future, provide that area. So that's it for me.
Anne?
Yeah, I had a couple of meetings recently, Board of Education on the seventh of November, highlights there, and this, there'll be more information coming down from the state, it looks like another sort of unfunded mandate, and they're kind of pushing it fast and furious, but under the State's Right to Read Act, the state is now using that law to come up with a, a new requirement to transition to new K through three reading programs, and they, there's certain ones suggested, or you can obtain a waiver. So Board of Education discussed this at length, and they may end up doing a pilot program and probably trying to apply for a waiver, because they're, they're getting some good results, I guess, from their current, you know, K through three and beyond reading programs, so we'll watch for that one. Chris Lund talked about facilities and that, at the middle school, the sealant project is going very well, he'll be, I guess he met just recently with the architect for the pool roof repairs. There was a discussion, a little bit of budgetary discussion, as you know, the budget workshops are started this past week, there's two of them usually, fifty-four percent, I believe, increase in, in electricity bill for, for them, and the initial number for potential budget increase was about nine percent, I heard that bandied around, but again, those workshops will be taking place, so. Let's see, I went to a library meeting on the fourteenth, which was this past Monday, the auditors gave, were present, and first time for them, I guess, new auditors, and they reported, there was a clean audit, no material issues, and very few management, suggestions from management, so that was very, you know, de minimis there, so that was great. The board, library board adopted their privacy policy, I think I mentioned that at a previous meeting, and I'm going to just check in with them, I, I would hope they're putting that online, you know, now in its, in its final version for, for folks at the library. A good thing, Wi-Fi rental, you can rent out Wi-Fi for two weeks for those who can't, don't have it at home or can't afford it, so this is a nice little program, and libraries worked very well with Karen Share on that, so I thought that was a wonderful initiative, and I'm glad to see them doing that. The Millstone, the plaque about the Millstone at the Children's Museum, that will be placed there, that was the site of the original Eastline Library. They have a first draft of a budget, you know, it's very much a moving target right now, so I guess we'll hear more about that. And then the other thing is, I did go to Police Commission with Kevin, and I, I just, I thought there were some nice things that they had mentioned, so should I do that here, Kevin, is that okay for me to?
Well, I was going to give a-
You're going to do, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, then you do that, that's fine.
Well, what were you going to mention?
Well, I was just going to mention, which I was impressed with, was the dispatchers are now training with their officers to increase their skill set and, and to deal with the new technology, so I think that was, that's a pretty important development, and I'm happy with IT, the new IT director, so, but you can mention more about that.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry, I just, I just had it in my list of possible meetings.
I wasn't going to mention that, so that's fine.
You can do water and sewer.
Oh, thank you, yeah.
Kevin G can do water and sewer.
We need a few tidbits, we're-
Oh, yeah, no, that, that's good, I, I wasn't going to, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I wasn't going to do that, so, good, thank you. Anne?
Okay. I went to the Harbor Management Shelffish Commission meeting last night, they had a vote to increase the cost of obtaining a mooring, they increased it from twenty-five dollars to seventy-five dollars, and that's more in line with other towns and also for other costs that they're going to be having. There's also a discussion of digitizing the mooring applications. The harbor master now, Ron Johnson, his job is, is two parts, basically he is patrol the water and moorings, and he does the paperwork. The paperwork is voluminous, I mean, he spends hours and hours-
I've seen the book.
So this is really kind of, you know, getting up with the, you know, the twenty-twenty-two and digitizing this. They did speak to a few vendors, two vendors basically never responded, and I think it was about a week or so ago, we had an online tutorial with this online moorings, so something will be on for the, the agenda in December about this, about trying to enter into a contract with them. So that was, that was about it.
Okay.
Last night's planning commission meeting was canceled in lieu of a special meeting, eleven twenty-nine, public housing and affordable, I'm sorry, public hearing on affordable housing, so that's all, so I have to report on that one. And tomorrow night's TBC meeting has been canceled for a lack of agenda, no business.
And Town Building Committee is winding down from just about everything too.
Is there anything for me?
Planning.
Planning?
No, no, Building Committee was tomorrow, Planning was yesterday.
Got it, okay. Okay, moving on, I went to a Southeast Council of Government meeting today. TVCCA reported that they've already had a thousand more applications for fuel assistance for this coming year, and they have more funds available, but the spending is at a higher rate because of the fuel costs. They feel comfortable to be able to deal with it, but that's just one of the, you know, things they're dealing with, that's there. And they've also now got, you're able to apply for, you know, you know, rent assistance, fuel assistance, and now also, we're in the process of completing the paperwork for people can apply for water and sewer help as well, to where, okay, my, my water bill, I, I can't manage it, so there might be some options there, we're getting that paperwork done. Karen Share has also said they've had over fifty-plus more requests for Thanksgiving and Christmas meals this year as opposed to last year. Also there too, we had a presentation by the Inspector General for the State of Connecticut, this was established with the Police Accountability Act a couple of years ago, it's a retired judge, and it's, he's got one Assistant State's Attorney with him, as well as ten former police officers, and he pointed out that the body cams have done more to basically clear, or, you know, keep, not, basically clear the police officers of any wrongdoing, rather than, you know, uphold the complaint made against them, so they, he said they've turned out to be a very good, and most police officers I've talked to have said the same thing. Since we're talking about police and the Police Commission, they, we interviewed, the Commission interviewed two applicants for the one opening we had, both are extremely qualified, they did make one offer, and depending upon whether or not there's a retirement coming up, they might be able to start the second one very quickly as well. Moving on to the electric costs that the school had a problem with, we are locked in till twenty-twenty-four, so we're in good shape there. They're at eleven something cents a kilowatt hour, we're at six point something, eleven and a half, and we're, and we're, what?
I thought we were just right, seven.
Yeah, I thought we were at six point seven is what, Bill, Joe texted me too, but we're in good shape for a couple more years, so. Just for water and sewer, a couple things, meter replacement program is going on well, but occasionally, when people have had estimated, estimated bills for a few cycles, and the meter picks it up real good, and you get it electronically, it's a big bill. They have a plan, just contact them, they'll help space it out over time without any interest in that to help make it more affordable, so just contact Water and Sewer. Roseanne, this will make you very happy, the bids for the painting and fixing the water tower were a few hundred thousand less than we thought, so that's going to be starting very soon. They said for an additional several, you know, tens of thousands of dollars, they could paint the logo on the side of it, and I said, "No, we're not painting the logo on the side of it." You know, they're also going to remove some trees in the area too, because, you know, and that, around the water tank, so with some of the, so, anyway. And Kevin had brought up that last night at Water and Sewer, Finance Kevin is, we have to do that around here, that, and I'm going to ask him to do it for us too, is a five-year look back for the Water and Sewer, to see where things stood over the last five years financially, so, which made me back to, because at the next, our next meeting, we're going to have a brief presentation, we're working with Kevin on, where do we stand on our budget five months into the year, how are we standing, do we have any challenges, and so forth, where it looks like. So rather than, you know, comes, we have a problem, this way we're going to be able to identify what we, where we stand, I don't think, we're over in some, but we've, we're, I think we're in pretty good shape right now, but we'll have far more detail. Don't shake your head like that.
No.
Okay. Right, and the Board of Ed did report to the Board of Finance at its last meeting, Anne, I think you were there when that was, you were, or were you still at the Board of Finance meeting that, when the Board of Ed?
Yes, yes, no idea, yeah, yes.
They're, they're right now at about a little under seven hundred thousand dollars in deficit as of right now, so, so that's something we'll have to keep in mind.
What is the cause of that?
Some of it's for the healthcare costs, some of it's for hirings they had to do, some of it's for spent, they, yeah.
But they said they asked if there was anything specific.
That was, pretty much that.
Healthcare, but I think they also said that they, they have like, was it fourteen more paraprofessionals that they need to hire?
Yeah, because right now they're-
Right now they're subbed out.
They're subbed out to Kelly Services right now to do that, because they haven't been able to get enough paraprofessionals, so that's one of the problems. We did get a first, from our, the company that we get our healthcare through for the state two-point-oh plan, has told us to right now plan a twelve percent for an increase in healthcare costs, premiums for next year, so that will, you know. Usually they tell you eight, and then it falls back to five, last year, they, we, we, five, they said, do it go to eight, we went to eight, Board of Ed did not, they stayed at five, and with the hope it would go back, it came out at ten. Eight to ten was an easier jump to make, that five to ten was difficult. So we're coming up, Dan, you've done in the past, we have to renegotiate the boat dock leases, so we usually it's a panel of three, so, Dan, you still want to be on it?
Sure.
I'll let you recruit two more people then, so, so we'll do that, and that'll be coming up.
Start looking.
Right. Charter revision- Charter Revision Commission had the meeting, they came with their, the one charge they've already unanimously agreed that they, that they're, they're good with, I was told that they, the filling of vacancy, it should be not till the next election, but for the remainder of the term, they agreed with that, so that was one thing they said went quick, so, but they're getting, moving on for everything else now. The smell, everybody smelt today was the Monville, or Monville dump.
Backyard, yeah.
Yeah, I, I was, I was riding up to this cog government meeting in Norris this morning, I was going to pull over because I thought I had an electrical fire under the hood of the truck, but, you know.
My brakes went.
That's, okay, so, we did get numerous calls today, what's that smell? So, anyway. Moving on to some, we had a really nice Veterans Day celebration last Friday on the green, it was a really nice event, Dan, Roseanne, and Ann, thank you for being there, it was a very nice event. Then I was at the school, middle school for their presentation, and they recognized Harry Dinos, and Dick Waterman is two OR2 veterans, so they got the appropriate standing, and very well deserved standing ovation for their service, but that's totally run. The nice thing about that is when Jason Bitkud calls it to, calls, calls the Assembly to order, and from that point on, it's strictly students. No, no, I mean, none of us were recognized, but we don't get up and say anything, it was really impressive, so thanks to them too. And I'm finalizing, I've worked with Sandy, our HR, and I'm finalizing, manager slash department head evaluation forms, so that's going to be done during the month of December. And then, you know, a couple of good notes, Holiday Stroll is this Saturday, oh, no, the Saturday the 26th, from 3 to 8, with the Christmas tree lighting at 5, Main Street's going to be fun, and Thanksgiving morning, the Waterford Eastline football game at 10. I'm hoping that, just like last year, Rob Ruhl will be handing me the Battle of the Bridge trophy at the end of it, so. And outside of that, I think that's it, any questions for me? I think that covers everything.
Can you recall that a couple of meetings ago, I asked for us to discuss the current ethics policy?
Mm-hmm, I was going to do that, I was thinking maybe early January, before we head to budget, take a look at that.
I'd like to ask to have it done a little sooner, because the holiday season is coming up, and there's a stipulation in there as to the amount, the dollar amount of gifts that may be received.
Okay, well, I, I don't.
So a reminder anyway.
Okay.
That that's in place.
Okay, certainly. So, okay, there's no communications, no public comment obviously, Kevin, with your book, our selectives' response, so right now, we'll entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Okay.
For real estate.
After a five-minute break.
After, yeah, okay. We'll go in and then.
Right, moved to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing real estate matters, Eastlime Land Trust, Asawagachi Hills property. The board entered into executive session at 8:39 PM, they, and.
That's a motion.
That's it.
Okay, is it moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we will be in executive session after a five-minute break.
Right, the board returned from executive session at 9:15 PM, and no formal votes were taken.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Seconded, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, have a good evening, have a nice Thanksgiving, everyone.
Yeah.